The time has come for the Monday, May 19th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Item B, invocation by Father Praise Richard Fundus. Christ.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Good evening.
Christ Episcopal Church of Waukegan.
That's right. Christ Episcopal Church, right up the road on Grand Avenue.
Yes.
Privilege and a pleasure to be with you. Let us have an invocation. Holy One, Source of all wisdom, we gather today in this chamber, a place of deliberation, of vision, and of responsibility, aware that we stand at a threshold of new beginnings. Bless this council and all who serve in our city with clarity of purpose, steadiness of heart, and a shared commitment to the common good. Give us patience in disagreement, hope when the work is slow, and energy to face the tasks that lie ahead. Let justice not be delayed, compassion not be forgotten, and the voices of the unheard not be lost in the noise. Make this city a place of belonging, where neighbors care for neighbors, and leadership means service. Come be present in our speaking, in our listening, and in our choices today. Amen.
Amen. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 1C. Thank you, Father.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item C, the mayor's comments, and a little, some of the comments, just a tad bit long, and I'll try to get through them as quickly as possible. The first thing, public hearing for the budget and appropriation ordinance on Wednesday will be on Wednesday, May 28th, at 6:00 PM, right here at Waukegan City Hall. I would like to congratulate all of the graduates from Waukegan High School, as well as those graduates from the other high schools that students from Waukegan attend. Also want to recognize the college students for their, for that they are returning back home. To all of you, your city is proud of you, and we want to know, we want you to know, that we want you to be part of our community as we work together to rebuild Waukegan. Some quick announcements. The Waukegan Beach opens the coming weekend on Saturday, May 24th. Waukegan Lakefront Coordinator, Ms. Lisa May, the Beach Rangers, the Waukegan Public Works, our Waukegan Police Department have been doing a great job getting the facility ready for the upcoming season. Waterfront Market at the Waukegan Harbor opens on Friday, May 23rd, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in Silver Park. It will take place every fourth Saturday each month through Sept- through September. The Waukegan Pride, Waukegan Pride Parade and Festival that is organized by the Waukegan Friends will take place on Saturday, May 31st. The parade starts at 3:00 PM on Sheridan Road and Douglas, and will proceed south on Sheridan, where it will end at Cy- Cyver Park at the Waukegan Harbor. Their fest will run from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and will feature live entertainment, food trucks, and more. The after-party will be down, will be downtown at Night Shades and Dark, starting at 10:00 PM. Haven't heard that term in a while. The Memorial, Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony will be on Monday, May 26th. Parade steps off from Washington and Genesee at 10:45, and will end at Veterans Plaza with the Memorial Day Ceremony at 11:00 AM. The City of Waukegan, the Waukegan Park District, and the Lake County Autobahn Society will be hosting a special screening of the film Sharing Our Shore and the Return of the Piping Plover to Waukegan Shores on Thursday. On May 29th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, at the Waukegan History Museum at Carnegie. So just so I'm clear, David, this is going to be at the Carnegie, the new Carnegie Library? Oh, that's good. We're not going to have it outside like we had last time, huh?
It's going to be much better inside.
I'm pretty sure it is, considering the weather might change quickly on us. So this film tells the story of the endangered Great Lakes Piping Plovers, the history make, making release of four plovers in 2003, the successful nesting season of 2024, and the role Sharing Our Shore. Waukegan Play, Waukegan Play is an important conservation effort. This event is free and open to the community. So pass the word. Fan favorite Britt Floyd returns to the Genesee Theater on Friday, May 30th, at 8:00 PM with a new show celebrating 50th anniversary of Pink Floyd's album, Wish You Were Here, one of the greatest albums of all times. Black Berry Smoke serves up a refreshing cocktail of southern rock, country, and folk garnish with a slice of blues at the Genesee Theater on Thursday, June 5th, at 7:30 PM. Our Waukegan Libraries' Summer Concert Series begin on Friday, June 6th, and runs every Friday on, in June, July, and August from noon to 1:00. These free concerts are held in the library's courtyard on county, weather permitting. Freefalling, the Tom Petty Concert Experience, performs at the Genesee on Friday, June 6th, 7:30. This national touring act features Petty's greatest hits, authentic instruments, and custom changes for all, full concert experience, and has been performing throughout the U.S. for over 17 years. The very popular Beach Yoga begins this new, begins their new season at 8:00 AM on Saturday, June 7th, in Steiner Pavilion at the Waukegan Beach. This free yoga practice is made possible through partnerships between City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Park District. The Waukegan Band Concert, yay! The Waukegan Band Concert Series will kick off at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, June 17th, in the Steiner Pavilion at the Waukegan Beach. These free concerts will happen every Tuesday, every Tuesday night at 7:30, and the season will conclude with a best-of-the-season concert on Tuesday, August 5th. The African American Museum at England Manor is coordinating this year's June 17th Lake County Parade and Festival that will take place on Saturday, June 21st. The parade starts at 1:00 PM. Washington.
It will include. I'm sorry.
It will include elite, elite striders, drill team, and drum corps, South Shore Drill Team, local school marching bands, low riders, motorcycle, motorcycles, Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth, and much, much more. The event will end with a street festival on Genesee Street from Washington to Madison. The first outdoor art walk of the season took place this past weekend, and it was, and it was a vibrant success with over 40 particip- participating galleries, venues, and businesses. Families feel downtown from north to south Genesee Street, enjoying live music, food, hands-on art experiences, and packed venues. The next art walk is June 21st, and will feature the Lake County Juneteenth Festival in addition to many art walk stops throughout Waukegan's Art and Entertainment District. The Waukegan Park District 2025 American Independence Parade will be held, will be held on Sunday, June 29th, 2025, stepping off at 1:00 PM and traveling north on Sheridan Road from Franklin Street to Jack Benny Drive. The parade theme is family, friends, and the fourth. In the grand marshal will be a special recreation services of Northern Lake County. With thousands of spectators expected along the Sheridan Road, Sheridan Road, businesses and organizations are invited to participate in this longstanding community tradition with a parade entry. The participants in the, in the parade, a completed application must be submitted online by Sunday, June 1, 2025, at 11:59 PM. Businesses and non-political organizations can participate for free. Political organizations must pay $100 fee to participate. Waukegan's fireworks will be nine, will be at 9:30 PM on Friday, July the 4th. Finally, Scoop will take place on Friday, July 11th, and Saturday, July 12th, in downtown Waukegan. For more information on this event and many more, please visit the city's calendar at waukeganil.gov or call the city's Public Relations Department at 847-599-2525. Thank you. Item 3, Madam Clerk, audience time.
Actually, we have something before that. We have a resolution, proclamations, presentations, and we have two tonight. The first one, proclamation, National Safe Boating Week, is May 17th through the 23rd, 2025. Whereas recreational boating continues to grow as a popular way for millions of Americans to relax with their families and friends, and whereas increased public participation in this healthy outdoor sport has emphasized the need for greater attention to courtesy, safety, and education to minimize incidents which lead to boating mishaps. And whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., with 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, safety is essential for the full enjoyment of boating, and safe boating practices will result in the saving of many lives and in the avoidance of injuries and property damage. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error, poor judgment, and limited training, and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 41-05, Division 41, District 9WR, which serves the Waukegan Harbor area, supports National Safe Boating Week in partnership with the U.S. Coast Guard and National Safe Boating Council, and provides boater safety education, which results in our waterways providing a relatively safe and almost accident-free environment. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Sam, Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, dear hereby proclaim, May 17th through May 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in Waukegan and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating, adopted this 19th day of May, 2025. And I believe we have people from the flotilla here, and we have Mr. Jim Herster. Mayor?
She's read the proclamation. I just want to probably emphasize the importance of safe boating. And if you decide not to be conducting yourselves accordingly out on the waters, luckily we have you and your team who are there to help us. So, on behalf of the mayor's office, city council, the citizens of Waukegan, we say thank you for your service, and thank you for looking out for those sometimes and look out for themselves. With that being said, here's your proclamation. Would I just say something?
Yeah, real quickly, this is our commander, Mr. Jim Stahl. I'm Jim Herster. We appreciate, we are a vol- we are the Coast Guard, but we are the volunteer arm, and we provide boating education, search and rescue, radio operations, et cetera. So, we appreciate the recognition and this proclamation, Mr. Mayor.
Safe boating.
That's the post figure. One, two, three, smile. One more. I don't think my question. One, two, three. Go. Excellent. Yes. I have another question. Yes. Sure.
We do have a second proclamation, and it is, hold on. World Migratory Bird Day and Official Piping Plover Day. Whereas, migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that shares our community, and Waukegan is part of an important migratory bird route as part of the Lake Michigan Corridor, with bird stops at its lakefront parks, ravines, and homes. Whereas, many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds and aquatic birds as symbolic hobbingers of the change of season. And whereas, these migrant species also play an important economic role in our city, controlling insect pets, attracting birders to visit from outside our community. And whereas, insects provide essential energy for migratory birds, critical for their survival during migration and other stages of the life cycles, especially when feeding their offspring. Whereas, massive decline in insect populations in many parts of the world is having serious implications for migratory birds. And whereas, migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, and are facing a growing number of threats on migration routes to and from their summer and winter homes. And whereas, public education, awareness, and concern are crucial components of bird conservation, and citizens who are informed about the threats birds face are empowered to help address those threats, directly contributing to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas, since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day, formerly International Migratory Bird Day, has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel from wintering in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S., to nesting habitats in our community and throughout North America. And whereas, light pollution attracts and disorients nocturnally migrating birds, making them more likely to land in areas where they are more vulnerable to collisions and other dangers, individuals, communities, and government are encouraged to dim the lights at night. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and the members of City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim, May 10th, 2025, and October 11th, as World Migratory Bird Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate this observation, this observance, and to support efforts to protect our birds and protect our insects to help conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. Be it further resolved that in honor of return of Waukegan's most beloved migratory bird, the piping plover, Waukegan is dedicating May 29th, 2025, as Official Piping Plover Day in Waukegan, and we encourage everyone to participate in Lake County Autobahn Society's special documentary film screening of Sharing Our Shore and the Return of the Piping Plovers to Waukegan Shores at 7:00 PM on May 29th at the Waukegan History Museum at the Carnegie to learn more about this endangered species that calls Waukegan home, adopted this 19th day of May, 2025. And I believe we have some Autobahn people here by the name of Caroline Luke and Friends.
All right. And, yes, and Friends, you come and stand by me, Friends.
It's okay? Yeah? Does this work?
Yes, it works.
Thank you to the City of Waukegan, Mayor Cunningham, and the City Council for recognizing World Migratory Bird Day, and thank you for declaring May 29th Piping Plover Day, a day we will celebrate annually with our community. As a symbol of hope and a reminder that by protecting the habitat the plovers depend on, we protect that habitat for other species and for all of us. Plovers garner a lot of positive attention for Waukegan with newspaper articles, radio and TV shows, and showing of the plover film. Blaze and Pepper have returned to Waukegan for the second year, and we are sharing here tonight for the first time that we have a full clutch of eggs, and that the birds will be incubating the eggs for the next month. And we are want to share with you that one of our plover chicks from last year has also returned safely. We've spotted Sage at a beach a little bit north of us. We haven't seen her yet, but she's probably hiding from this unseasonably cold weather. Our next vision for the coming year is to gain international recognition for Waukegan and their efforts to protect the piping plover.
Oh. We're going to move to the center. I was going to tell them to go to the center. You're going to come this way, and I'm going to give this to you, to home.
Thank you.
Turn this way, but before, going to. So we got some babies coming. Oh, my goodness. Right here in Waukegan. I'll be, I'll be another grandpa. All right. Let's get this picture.
You do have three minutes. Let me put that clock on. I'm going to read the first half. Go ahead to the east side of the room. Be ready. State your name. The first one is Brother Blanks, Yeginia Briscoe, Tiffany Verzani, Rayon Edwards, and Jesus Uribe. Brother Blanks, Yeginia Briscoe, Tiffany Verzani, Rayon Edwards, and Jesus Uribe.
Mayor, I'd like to extend congratulations to you. You elected, uh, the position of mayor of the City of Waukegan. And also, wanted to make mention that today, that while I'm presenting this to you guys, is a very special day in the heart of our organization and in the heart of civil life,
Test, test, test. One, two, test, test. You're going to pass, ma'am? Okay. I have Ms. Tiffany Verzani, please.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Verzani from the Waukegan Public Library. I want to thank you so much, Mayor Cunningham, for mentioning the summer concerts at the library. I just wanted to add on behalf of the Friends that they are having their summer book sale, and it will be this, no, two Saturdays, Saturday, May 31st, from 10:00 to 1:00 for members only, but you can join at the door for $10 and become a member. And then from 1:00 to 4:30, it's open to the public. And then on Sunday, June 1st, from 1:00 to 4:30, they're doing a bag sale, so fill a bag of books for $5, as much as you can, and that also dovetails with our summer reading club kickoff party. So on the June 1st, also from 2:00 to 4:00, we're going to have the Traveling World of Reptiles. You get to come up close and personal with a lot of cool animals, our projects, dance parties, snacks, and a lot of fun. So, we just invite the community to look out for our summer newsletter. We'll be in our mobile services van at all the parties and festivals that you mentioned, passing out books and other library information, so we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Mr. Rayon Edwards, please.
Good evening, council. Congratulations to all of the kids that graduated this year in 2025. I'm going to propose something to this council next year graduation. I think it'd be awesome if all of our leaders that sits up here can be at that graduation, walking those kids to that stage. I think that would set a, I mean, it would just be remarkable, and I think they deserve that. Two things, few things I want to touch on tonight, because it's silent when we're talking about this hospital. This hospital is in Waukegan.
When you driving down the street and you stop at a stoplight and somebody running to your car, you don't know what they fit to do to you. You don't know what's gonna happen to you. It's almost Waukegan look like a fifth war country. Almost every corner, there's buckets, flowers being sold, teddy bears. You could just set up shop anywhere and do anything, but we gonna tell the guy that's selling the drugs, he can't shut up shop, right? What's the difference? It's all to make money. And my last thing, I seen something on the agenda tonight where Ms. Jennifer Weatherspoon, we paying $95,000. I'm not sure what the title is, ain't my business. I just hope it's a job where we are punching in every day, because as we, I'm watching the news, Trump is steady hitting us, y'all. He hitting hard, and so I hope we are gonna be mindful of the money that we are paying and the monies that we are spending, because the people are already hurting. We don't need nothing raised on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jesus Uribe? Sir, you're asking for translation services?
Yes.
There is a, pardon me? Yeah. Ms. Jocelyn from the PR Department, that does allow you, according to our ordinance, a longer time, so I will do it manually.
Hold on a second. Do you, the microphone?
Yeah.
Okay. Buenas noches. Este, me presento, yo soy Jesus Uribe, un miembro de la organización de Juntos, sin fines de lucro.
Hi, my name is Jesus Uribe. I am from the Juntos organization, a nonprofit organization.
Que la ciudad de Waukegan nos otorgó el desfile de fiestas patrias para el 15 de septiembre. Somos una organización sin fines de lucro que tratamos de ayudar a la comunidad.
The City of Waukegan authorized the Viva la Independencia Parade. The City of Waukegan authorized the Viva la Independencia Parade to the Juntos organization, and Juntos is a nonprofit organization that helps the community of Waukegan.
Lo que recaudamos en el desfile pasado, que nos sobró después de gastos de aquí de la ciudad, este, para el próximo mes vamos a regalar, este, tres becas a los estudiantes que entran a la universidad.
From what we raised in the last parade, we will give three scholarships to students that will be going to the university here in Waukegan.
Y tenemos planeado que para el próximo desfile después de gastos, este, vamos a otorgar lo que sobra para la gente enferma de cáncer.
And whatever is raised for the next, from the next parade, will be given to people that are, that have cancer.
Entonces les pedimos el apoyo a la ciudad de Waukegan y a toda la gente presentes, que si nos pueden apoyar estamos abiertos en voluntarios y patrocinadores para ayudar a la comunidad hispana.
And we are asking council members and the City of Waukegan, whoever wants to volunteer or sponsor, we are open for opportunities.
Eso es todo. Gracias.
That is everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next three will be Elizabeth Marrero, Margaret Carrasco, and Esther Haran. So Elizabeth Marrero.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations, Mayor Sam Cunningham. My name is Elizabeth Marrero, and I'm speaking on behalf of Juntos, an after-profit organization, and also as a concerned community member, to request an investigation and corrective action about one of your aldermen's misconduct, Victor Felix, in accordance with the City Code of Ethics and Public Integrity obligation. On April 27, I and another board member of the organization met with Alderman Felix per his request. Felix tried to pressure the organization to withdraw or approve special event permit for the annual Latino parade, Viva la Independencia. Felix stated that the event had been promised to other individuals and warned us that if we do not withdraw, they will find loopholes to revoke the permit. He also warned us that if we decide to appeal the decision, most of the city council will vote against us. Felix stated that by Juntos withdrawing from coordinating the parade will be the best possible scenario for the City of Waukegan to avoid any drama. This is not only deeply inappropriate, it reflects a violation of our city ethics code and the principles of fair and impartial governance. No public official should use their position to intimidate or manipulate community groups or leverage influence for political gain. And I'm gonna repeat, no public official should use their position to intimidate or manipulate community groups or leverage influence for political gain. We also learned that this alderman has been questioning city staff about ways to find loopholes to revoke the permit. It seems like he's actively looking for technicalities. This behavior is intimidating, inappropriate, and it very unethical. It violates the City of Waukegan Code of Ethics, the public's right to equal and unbiased treatment. I respectfully request the following: A formal investigation into the alderman's conduct and a public disclosure of the investigation findings; appropriate corrective action, including training on Code of Ethics as provided by the city policy; the people of Waukegan deserve elective officials who operate with integrity, not intimidation; transparency, not background manipulation; and not accepting bribery from anyone in the community. I trust you, Mayor Sam Cunningham, and the city council, that you guys will give this urgent attention and accountability it requires. Thank you for your time and commitment to our city.
Thank you. Ms. Margaret Carrasco.
Copy of that. I want a copy of that. I'm gonna put this in. No, no, no. I want the official one from you, and we'll put this in the record, okay? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Um, tonight, good evening. My words tonight would be directed to, first of all, Agenda Item Number 7, listed under New Business. It states a resolution approving the engagement of law firm Witherspoon in the mount. And as many people know, I think I'm the queen for FOIAs. I've done FOIAs at about every municipality here in Lake County, county level, state level, national level, federal level. I am here tonight because my experience in dealing with this law firm and doing FOIAs, she's the best. Her work surpassed any other attorney, law firm, legal counsel in the United States, sincerely, and so I think her selection is one of heavy excellence here in the City of Waukegan, okay? Next, under Agenda Item 4D, Consent Agenda, Vendor Payments. I don't know if anyone noticed, but under Vendor Payments, this last run, there is the name of Brad Goodman, in the amount of $24,999, just $1 short of the threshold of $25,000 that needs city council approval. Get my drift? You know, so tonight, I want to direct my words to legal counsel. I will be filing an ethics complaint to investigate if the use of taxpayers' dollars to pay for a Brad Goodman was not, I mean, and please investigate if this is the same Brad Goodman that's a campaign manager of Mayor, the former Mayor Ann Taylor. I don't know, but is it legal? Can you tell me, sir? Is it legal if, in the event it is, is it legal to use taxpayers' dollars to pay for the campaign manager of a candidate, political candidate, campaign? I don't think so. Anyhow, lots of questions, need I say, if that is the same Brad Goodman. So I will be also doing a FOIA into all the invoices, and what did he actually do for the taxpayers of Waukegan? Lastly, oops, the FOIA request on all the emails and everything for Alderman Lynn Florian and Alderman Tom Hayes should be interesting. Thank you.
Elizabeth Haran. Oh, I'm sorry, Esther Haran. My apologies.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I want to talk about safety and accessibility in Waukegan. Last month, during a meeting with the previous administration, I mentioned two problems: the broken asphalt hole on sidewalks, which is dangerous and ugly, and the faded paint on crosswalks. My opinion is shared by other members of the community. I don't know if both works have been paid by the City of Waukegan and/or the Waukegan Art Council, but are no appropriate and will no last. Other jobs could be done that helps the community. Let me share three serious problems among the many that exist. First, unsafe crosswalks. For example, at Genesee Street and Water Street, cars don't stop despite having before why strike crosswalk. I almost got hit, and I had to step back in different occasions. The pain won't help. Second, dangerous crossing. Two months ago, I asked the city for a pedestrian sign near important NBC buildings, the Social Security Administration, and the Illinois Department of Human Services in Lewis Avenue. Pedestrians practically jump between the cars coming in both directions to cross the avenue. The city has not done anything. Meanwhile, just down the street, two traffic lights sit very close together near Lewis Produce and Tony's supermarkets. It doesn't make sense. From those lights, drivers speed all the way to Sunset Avenue. Third, a missing ramp for wheelchair users. At the main base bus stop on Sheridan Avenue, there is no ramp to cross from Madison Street. People in wheelchairs must take a longer route. They go first to the corner of Washington Avenue, next cross the avenue, and then return to Madison Street to transfer buses. Shouldn't we fix this problem before painting more crosswalk or putting asphalt on sidewalks? In Waukegan, there is no strong enforcement of traffic laws. During the day, drivers park on sidewalks, especially after 5:00 PM. No cameras, no tickets, no rules. Educating the community requires enforcing stronger measures. If Waukegan leaders want to improve our city, they so must start listening to residents. People should feel proud to live here. Investors could consider financing businesses, and visitors would want to return again. However, this is not happening, and it will not if you don't change the course of your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the audience portion. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 4, Consent Agenda. If a non-controversial would be approved by one motion, if any one board member wishes to have a separate vote on any item, it would be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to, I'm kind of curious about this line item for Mr. Brad Goodman that was mentioned by Mrs. Carrasco. I had no awareness of it, and it certainly raises a curious, a curious point. I would like to pull that particular line item from the agenda until we can get some questions answered about it.
That vendor, so that vendor payment will be held, will be held until further information. It's not a line, it's a line item, but it's just a vendor payment, so what we'll do is just pull that vendor payment from the payroll until we get some more information.
Thank you, sir.
Get back to council on that.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I would like to make a motion for the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Alderman, I'll second that. Motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Guzman. Are there any questions to the motion? Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian. Aye. Hayes.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Motion passed.
So we're taking just Items 4 through D for all of them?
So you did?
My interpretation of the motion was you're approving all of them, but amending the, but the vendor payment amount instead of being $5,976,702 would be $49,999 less. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's great.
24.
24.
24, I'm sorry.
24, 999 less.
Until we...
Until you can determine what that payment is, what work was done for that payment.
So just so the public is clear, what you see on the agenda is $5,976,702.63. Of that dollar amount, $24,999 will be taken off that dollar amount.
Mayor, can I just ask for clarification, though? I think it was on the previous. It wasn't today's. So, because I looked at it, and it wasn't on this one, so I don't think we should adjust this week's because it already happened last time.
So it's the previous, May 5th?
All right.
Okay, so at this being, with that being said, we apologize, thank you for bringing it to our attention. With that being said, on this payroll amount, the dollar that's on the agenda will stand as presented.
It's the vendor payments, sir, not the payroll.
I'm sorry, vendor payment.
Yeah.
All right. So Item D, vendor payment. So vendor payment, $5,976,702.63 will stand as is written on the agenda, which is also part of the consent agenda.
That's correct, because the amendment was only for that one vendor. If it's not on there, then we don't need to alter the amount.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
We already had it.
Hey, Mayor, we're still gonna look into that line item?
Oh, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah, well, we'll get that taken care of for you. Item 6, so Business. Resolution approving rental agreement extension with Michael's Corporation for more space in Waukegan Harbor. This was held over at the May 5th, 2025, City Council.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Florian. The Alderman who made the motion to hold it over?
We're good.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions to the motion? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion passed and carried. Item B, Resolution approving professional service agreement with Electromatic Ventures, Inc., for the design...
With that being said, on this payroll amount, the dollar that's on the agenda will stand as presented.
It's the vendor payment, sir, not the payroll.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Vendor payment.
Yeah.
All right. So item D, vendor payment. So vendor payment, five million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and two dollars and sixty-three cents will stand as is written on the agenda, which is also part of the consent agenda.
That's correct because the, the amendment was only for that one vendor. If it's not on there, then we don't need to alter the amount.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
We already had it.
Oh, we.
Yeah, we.
Mayor, we're still going to look into that line item?
Oh, yeah, well, yes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah, well, well, we'll get that taken care of for you. Uh, item six, old business. Resolution approving rental agreement extension with Michael's Corporation for mo, for more space in Waukegan Harbor. This was held over by, at the May fifth, twenty twenty-five, City Council.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Florian. Uh, the Alderman who made the, the, the motion to hold it over.
We're good.
We're good. Thank you.
We're good.
Any questions to the motion? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion passed and carried. Item B, resolution approving professional service agreement with Electromatic Ventures, Inc., for the design, manufacture, and installation of Waukegan identity letters in amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. Voted, voted down on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The City Council voted to reconsider this resolution on May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
We hear the reconsider, the vote again. We need a motion.
A motion.
Uh, motion by Alderman Felix, second.
I'll second.
All by Alderman Guzman. Are there any questions to the motion? No questions. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion passed and carried. Uh, item seven, new business, a resolution approving engagement of law firm.
Mayor, could we didn't make a motion to omnibus or?
But, so all that was.
Second that.
Okay. So we omnibus all of those?
Yes, all of them.
Okay.
But then we want to.
Unless somebody wants to pull some more stuff out.
Which I do.
Okay, so there's a, there's a motion by Alderman Guzman to omnibus.
Second by Alderman.
Florian. I need questions to the motion?
I'd like to pull two of them out, uh, just for comment.
Sure.
Uh, item C and item H. And for, for sake of expediency, um, we don't have to discuss them each separately. I mean, I can just make my comment here and then maybe we can keep them on the, on the omnibus, okay? So with item C and, and item H and, and this is quite, quite common now for me because whenever I see a line item for approval, approval of ex, approval to expend tax dollars, I'd like to see that in the agenda and in both of these cases, there's no monies. Now, I have had a conversation with Alderman Newsom. She informed me, brought it to my attention, um, and along with Alderman Florian, thank you both, that there is, um, it's confusing me, but there's some dollar amount, uh, allotted for, assigned to each of these line items and in the committee, right? So correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand item C, um, for the resolution approving the authorization of, and, uh, the execution of an agreement between the city of Waukegan and Michael Hill, who videographer, that that dollar amount is approximately forty thousand dollars per year?
A little over.
It's okay.
But it depends on.
It actually depends on how many meetings they have to videotape, uh, whatever they have to amend to put on the YouTube channel and how many, um, you know, when their video monitors have to be displayed here in the city council, they, uh, are paid, paid an additional fee for that. So like next week, we have a special finance, um, budgeting hearing, so that'll be an extra a hundred dollars that's not, would normally be for the month that they would get paid. So it depends on how many meetings they have to attend, and it averaged out, uh, between a little over forty thousand per year. And we did amend this to cover the next four years.
That's, that's correct, yeah. So as, um, trustee has indicated, because you may have special meetings, obviously that would adjust the amount per payment and, but the videographer has actually agreed instead of, I think in your packet, it was either a one or a three-year term. He's actually agreed to do a four-year term at the same rate.
Yes, at the same rate.
See, that's, that's my point. There, there is no mention of rate or any dollar spend. We're at, being asked to approve something, approve the expenditure of funds, but there's no stipulation of what amount that is. So, and this, this happens more often than it should.
It's no, it's no amount in totality, but there is an amount for each job that they do.
So if we, if we have, uh, what do we have, twenty-four meetings, right, in a year, let's just average, you know, say, you know, twenty-four meetings a year, and they're going to do X number of hours or X number of, um, tasks for each meeting, you can calculate how much that would cost over twenty-four meetings and then.
It's not just city council, planning and zoning.
Got it. So whatever, whatever those numbers of tasks are for whatever, sit, whatever meetings they're involved in, you can calculate or estimate how many hours they're going to spend and give, maybe give a cushion of, uh, five to ten thousand dollars or something. But you can't, my point is, you can't just say, hey, let's approve spending some money, but we don't know how much.
Okay.
You gotta, you gotta have some, something out there.
Okay, Alderman, what I tell you what we'll do, certainly in, in the future, when we, when we deal with things like this, we'll put a dollar amount in and put a not to exceed based on that average, and we'll go from there. Okay?
Well, we'll, we'll put it not to exceed fifty, fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
All right, let's make that, I make a motion to amend this.
Okay.
Item C to, uh.
Not to exceed fifty thousand.
An amount not to exceed.
Per year.
Not, amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars per year. For the duration of the contract. Does that make sense?
No, no problem. We'll keep a close eye to make sure we, we get close to the buffer to bring him back.
Thank you.
We, uh, we got a comment by Alderman Turner, another comment by Alderman Hayes. Alderman Hayes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a clarification, I think this was amended in the committee. Did we take care of that amendment?
Yes, to, to.
We did do the amendment for the four years in the committee.
Thanks.
Thank you. And item H, same thing?
Item H is, uh, basically the same thing. I understand that it, it, there is a, uh, a price associated with it in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. So, um, I'd like to amend this item H to include that stipulation that it's sixty-five thousand dollars. And that is resolution approving the award of the twenty twenty-five manhole and catch basin frames and grates rebid to EJ USA for the pricing on the bid tab, sixty-five thousand dollars.
I, I tell you, with that one, Alderman, because you could run into a lot of manholes, how about if we put on there the price per manhole and, and approve that and then we can move?
Mayor, though, it's not just, I've got the, the bid tab here.
Sure.
So it's inlet grates at a hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. It's a curb inlet at a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. It's driver, drive over roll curb inlet grates at three hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. It's not one thing, there's a whole.
And I agree, I agree.
Two pages of this stuff. So we could, we could do the same thing and just say up to sixty-five thousand dollars, and if they go over, then they come back.
They come back to us. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, they anticipate spending just that much.
Great.
Sixty-five thousand.
All right. So, well, we'll put a dollar number on there and I'll work, we'll work with Public Works to make sure. So we, the goal is not to come back to you guys all the time for this, and I'm gonna be very honest, in emergencies, that number can escalate quite quick, quite.
Why don't we just lock in the rate?
Hold on a second. I want to get Alderman Turner, you have something, and Alderman, uh, Felix. Alderman Turner, you have some ending comments?
No, just gonna agree with Alderman Florian. If we can just make a stipulation that it's amount not to exceed sixty thou, sixty-five thousand dollars, as we did on, uh, item C, I think we can move forward.
Sounds good. Alderman Felix.
I was gonna suggest, why don't we just lock in the rate? Cause like you said, we might have emergencies or might have to do a little more.
But emergencies are just that, emergencies. This is pro forma, this is standard, right? We're saying for these numbers of tasks, with this particular set of tasks, this is what the expenditure is. Obviously, if there's something beyond that, that's why we have change orders or emergency expenditures.
All right, sixty-five thousand. So I, item H is just gonna, we're gonna amend that and just put a dollar amount of sixty-five thousand for right now?
Yep.
Not to exceed sixty-five K?
Yep, and then we can omnibus.
And we'll keep you. So for item C, we're, eh, eh, we're not taking it out, I'm just going to read the dollar amount. Um, so the resolution approving authorization and execution of an agreement by the city of Waukegan and Michael Hill, uh.
You gonna start it?
Oh, okay, I, I'm just gonna use those some. The matter was presented in the Finance Purchasing Committee, May nineteen, May nineteen twenty twenty-five, not to exceed fifty thousand. What I'm gonna do, everybody, I'm going to read now, starting from.
Whoa, whoa, just to be clear, I'm sorry. Fifty thousand dollars per year for a duration of the contract, okay?
Fifty thousand per year.
For the next four years?
Over the next four years. Okay? And I'm going to start now at seven A. I was just clearing up those two. Resolution A, approving engagement of law firm J, uh, law, law firm J Witherspoon in amount not, amount of ninety-five thousand annually through June. Here we go. Uh, was presented Finance Committee, Purchasing Committee, May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item seven B, resolution approving an agreement with, uh, Centric Integration for a managed support agreement per section two dash four five eight, parentheses I, parentheses five, high degree of scale in amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars. This matter was presented at Finance Purchasing Committee, May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item C has been read. Item D, resolution approving the, the award of twenty twenty-five mowing contract weekly to GNS of Illinois Inc. for an amount of fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Matter was presented to Public Works Infrastructure Committee, May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item E, resolution approving the award of the twenty twenty-five mowing contract by weekly to GNS Services of Illinois Inc. for an amount of fifty-seven thousand. This matter was presented to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item F, resolution approving the award of twenty twenty-five mowing contract six weeks to GNS Services, uh, of Illinois Inc. for an amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Matter was presented in Public Works Infrastructure Committee on May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item G, resolution approving the award of twenty twenty-five mowing contract cemeteries to GNS Services of Illinois Inc. for an amount of twenty-seven thousand. The matter was held, was heard at the Public Works Infrastructure Committee on May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item H, resolution approving the award of twenty twenty-five manhole and catch basin frames grades rebid to E and J USA for the pricing, pricing on the bid tab. The matter was presented, I'm sorry, bid tab of sixty-five thousand dollars for this year. Uh, the matter was heard in the Public Works Infrastructure Committee, May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item I, resolution approving the award of twenty twenty-five annual commodities bid for asphalt to Peter Baker and Son for not to exceed, for not to exceed the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. This matter was presented, Public Works Infrastructure Committee, May nineteenth twenty twenty-five. Item J, resolution approving the procurement of concrete as an, as an ad needed basis for not to exceed amount of twenty fifty thousand. The matter was presented to Public Works Infrastructure Committee on May nineteenth twenty twenty-five. Item A, K, resolution approving the award of two one, twenty twenty-five hydrant assemblies rebid to E and J USA Inc. for, for a note not to exceed, uh, not to exceed an amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Matter was presented to Public Works Infrastructure Committee, May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Resolution approving, correction, uh, seven L, resolution approving the utilization of Dukes for root control services per section two dash four five eight, parentheses I, parentheses one, sole source for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. This matter was presented, Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, on May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Item seven M, resolution approving an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement, the I dot, to appropriate a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy, a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents for the resurfacing of South Sheridan Road between Washington Street and South Terminus?
Terminus.
Terminus. The matter was presented, Public Works Infrastructure Committee, May nineteen twenty twenty-five. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion passed and carried. And I have been around for a long time and never knew that street name. You learn something new every day, everybody. All right. Item eight, there being none. Item nine, which is closing, uh, items. Item A, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, so I know, Mayor, you mentioned last meeting that you and I don't always agree on things, but I found some things we do agree on, and I wanted to bring them out to your attention. So I looked up the transition document that your team created when you became mayor in twenty seventeen. I don't know if you're doing one this time as well, but it, it was, it was full of a lot of information. I encourage anyone to look it up if they'd like to see what the city was facing back in twenty seventeen. Um, you're coming into office under very different circumstances this time. In twenty seventeen, we had several years of deficit spending, and not this time. We've actually had a surplus every year for the last four years, so you have a tough act to follow. Something your document recommended eight years ago was a five-year budget plan. The previous administration started that process, and I highly recommend you continue it. Crime had been going up when you came into office in twenty seventeen, but has fallen for the last four years. We have implemented license plate readers throughout the city, and they have been very successful at helping to solve crime, and I predict they will eventually prevent crime because people will know they're going to get caught. Another area that has improved significantly since your last term was our, um, our work comp costs. The previous administration instituted a strong proactive risk management program, including training and identifying potential risks. This was also highlighted in your transition document. Your document also discussed the tax levy. Here's another area where the previous administration set expectations very high. We have not increased the tax levy in four years, and this year we had probably the largest increase in the EAV ever in one year. The EAV is the equalized assessed value, the measure of the value of the assessed properties throughout the city. This means the value of property increased significantly in the last year, which means everybody's taxes went up, but not because we raised our amount. We got the same amount the last four years. Um, your document mentioned a second time a need for the five-year budget plan aimed at reducing the deficit, which now there isn't one, and controlling taxes, which we always need to think about. Now, I acknowledge we are going to face some challenging times coming ahead based on what's going on nationally and with some of the issues we face here in, in City Hall. You must know, this council has very high expectations at this point. With the help of committed staff and department heads, the former administration held the line on spending while providing the high quality of services our residents deserve and expect. Another thing your document emphasized was hiring a risk manager. I mentioned earlier how we had reduced our work comp exposure, and much of that was due to our excellent risk manager, Bob Benz. He has now left the city, and we need to find a replacement, if we can even replace him, as soon as possible. Another thing your document recommended was to sell off vacant city properties for community gardens, off-street parking, or to join a neighboring lot. I know we did some of this back in twenty seven, well, twenty nineteen, when I first got elected. I totally support this idea and look forward to your recommendations. An improved emergency communication system that enables the city to contact residents through emails, texts, and smartphone apps was also suggested. We need to continue to work to improve this and consider a three-one-one type of service for non-emergency connection, in my opinion. Although I believe our planning and zoning department is top-notch, Director Kershaw Leppin has assembled a fantastic, young, dynamic team. I believe, as your document suggested, that we need a separate Director of Economic Development. This individual would be responsible for reaching out to attract new businesses as well as nurturing existing businesses. I'm sure you must agree that nothing is more disheartening than seeing someone come here to us with a new business plan, only to see them never actually open or close within a year or two due to poor implementation. Another suggestion from your document was a city beautification plan, updating and beautifying the foliage and landscaping at the entrances to the city and downtown. Hundred percent agree. Adopting and strictly enforcing ordinances that requires all property that comes into disrepair, and I would add is not allowed per code or zoning to be repaired or brought into alignment promptly. I had a conversation with Mr. Lenzley, Lindsey earlier, and he said that's his goal, so I'm happy to hear that. This is something I believe that should be universal and absolute throughout the city. Doesn't matter who you are or who you know. Your document also said your administration would support ongoing and enhance efforts to increase the representation of minorities, bilingual speakers, and women in personnel. I look forward to seeing that as well. Some of your plans have been instituted and should be continued, such as annual performance reviews, weekend coverage by code enforcement, and an update of the city website. Something that continues to need improvement, in my opinion, is our relationship with the school district. The long-term success of the city depends on a high-quality school district. We should develop some direct connections to support the district as well as the CLC Lake Shore Campus. We face many challenges in Waukegan, both real and created. One of the biggest bigger challenges is the legacy of wrongful convictions from the nineteen nineties. Your document acknowledges this challenge and again emphasizes the need for a strong risk manager to handle this ongoing issue. Another big challenge is aging infrastructure, water main breaks, lead pipes, decaying roads and bridges. Your document recommends an annualized capital program for planned public infrastructure projects. I feel this is vital for our long-term financial success. Along with a five-year budget plan, this will ensure we don't exist purely from budget to budget, like people exist week to week, paycheck to paycheck. So as you can see, although you and I have historically had a difficult relationship, we do agree on many issues facing the city and I look forward to being part of the solution.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I pass. Thanks.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening. I just want to say a few things as as I'm very happy that I've I used to get multiple phone calls about the city being closed and basically not open for business. So I hope everybody's I actually received, what, two comments that they're very happy that they can go up and down and actually come talk to the mayor or department heads or wherever they were, you know, that city's open for business. So I'm very happy about that, that residents are happy and their concerns have been met. Second thing I would like to say is I went to the Waukegan High School graduation. I mean, those guys are troopers. I I think it rained on us like four or five times in different aspects of the of the evening. And those ladies reading off the names of the graduates, didn't matter if it rained hard, slow, whatever, they kept reading those names and they kept reading those names. I was like, wow. While everybody was finding cover or putting tables, I mean, chairs above their head or their pamphlets, I mean, to try to stay to try to stay dry, they kept going and the kids were very happy and I thought that that showed Waukegan at its best. I mean, no matter what, they were there for that day and they weren't going to let it spoil. So go Bulldogs. Those two twenty twenty-five guys, holy cow, they got something coming, man. So I was very happy about that. And just remember, even though the graduates have done and gone, school is still in session, so be careful out there, the bus, the buses, when they when those stop signs come out. Don't rush around them. Wait till the stop sign gets retracted because you don't know when or where a kid's going to come out of. Thank you.
Alderman Martinez.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk and Council. First, I would like to make a Father Rich front test for tonight's invocation. Also, I'd just like to give an update on the the street construction that they're that they're addressing on North Martin and also on on Leith Avenue. They have completed the sidewalks and the curbs and now today, as a matter of fact, they started the million of the road where they're going to break it up and they're going to start doing the pavement. I just asked my constituents to please obey the no parking ordinance. Also, please park in your own designated driveway or side streets that are located there. I've also requested extra police patrol at those areas while the construction is being done, where the cars are parked. But I just ask that you be very patient. In the long run, it will be paying dividends. As you know, this is the construction season. Also, I'd like to give a special shout out to the young volunteers from the Youth Conversation Corps, or YCC, for their dedication in cleaning of the our streets that Doug DeGaulle and Adelphi Avenue. This was part of the third ward cleanup. Over twenty-four bags were were picked up of garbage. I do appreciate it and I also want to give special thanks to each and every one of them for their hard work and dedication, also for the mayor for sponsoring the luncheon at Quonset Pizza. I know that was a a big major talk they had they had discussed. Also, special thanks to to Mr. Foltz from YCC, Director, Mr. Garland, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Ben Ambino, and Mr. Cruz for their outstanding assistance in coordinating and ensuring that it ran smooth, there was no injuries. These young volunteers went out of their way and again, I commend them for that. There will be more third ward cleaning. There'll be more information forthcoming, especially the alleys. But I must say that I have gone at my daily runs, I do go through the alleys and I see there's not that much trash there. So I think it is the diligence of of the business owners who are out there cleaning it and also just in general, it's just a cleaner place. I think that that's something that I like to see more consistency and I'll do my very best to keep doing these checks and make sure that the these areas are addressed. But YCC, I I have I'm scheduling them if they would do it sometime in June or July. With that being said, let me see, as far as YCC, I just wanted everyone to know that this is a non-for-profit organization, that they they cater or not cater, but they they mentor young adults in in carpentry and it's just a great program. If you know anyone who is interested, please call us eight four seven six two three zero nine hundred. And also, I'd like to say that on this Thursday at six o'clock at twenty-three-hundred Grand Avenue, we will be having our outside roll call with the police department. I do want to thank Chief Navarro for stepping up and honoring my request. It is the way for 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 our constituents to come and and ask questions and also overall, just interacting with the officers there. So I do want to commend Chief Police Navarro for that. That is going to be held this this Thursday at six o'clock. It's going to be at, like I said, twenty-three-hundred or at Dave's Liquor, east of Dave's Liquor. So I know there's 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 been an influx with the with the homeless. That's something that is really on my radar. As you can see, if you go by, they're they're not really hanging out there. Again, I'm trying to work hard to get that get that addressed. So again, I I do go out there and I I try to empower them and offer the resources that we have in the community, but at the end of the day, it is their decision. Sometimes they say that you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, but at least those options are there for them. And for the most part, they have been receptive and so have the business owners. Also, I want to mention the board, the the third ward meeting. I had to change it again because I other I have guest speakers that are going to be there. They had other commitments. As you know, this is the parade season, this is the festival season, so every weekend there's something going on. So with that being said, and thank you, Mrs. Briscoe, for bringing it to my attention, I have tentatively changed it to June the twenty-eighth, which is a Saturday, from one to three. And that is going to be held at the Brookside Campus, twenty-three-twenty-five Brookside Avenue. It will be held in the cafeteria. My goal is to get as many as as many directors or as as many leaders in different different departments to address the state of state of the third ward and also our city. On top of that, I think I want to do something different where I want to recognize a business of the year in the third ward that go beyond the the average, just patronizing or, you know, just having a business. And also, I also want to recognize a citizen in our ward that also has done a lot for the city. I will be recognizing them as part as the program. I encourage everyone to show up. If something changes, I will make sure that I let everyone know, sir, there might be more information forthcoming. But right now, tentatively, I just scheduled for for the for that date. With that being said, let me see what else is going on. If you need to get ahold of me, I can be reached at eight four seven three nine zero twenty-six eighty-nine. And before I go, I also would like to welcome our new business opening. It is called the Family Crab and Juice Seafood. And this is going to be located at the old Paragon Restaurant or twenty-one oh one Grand Avenue. More information forthcoming, I'm trying to see if I can hopefully work with the owner to get like a soft opening, but I'm very excited that this is opening up in in our ward. As you know, this is will be the second or third seafood restaurant in in our ward, so we always welcome there. So just to give you a heads up on that. With that being said, just ask that you be safe. Please know that the warmer months are coming. Please respect the the sound or the laws, the the sound, music, please keep it down. And that's all I have. I just ask that you be safe, be mindful, and as always, let's all be great neighbors. Thank you and good night.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you. I do want to address what was said earlier regarding the the events. So I want to say that I want to reaffirm my commitment to the city of Waukegan and to the integrity of our event process. As elected official, I fully respect and will continue to follow all city ordinances, policies, and procedures related to public events. At no time have I attempted to violate or go around these established protocols. If my actions were perceived as anything other than supportive, I want to sincerely sincerely apologize. I'm here to work alongside our community partners, not against them. For my first year, when I supported the Ephesus Patrias, there was a controversy there, but I did support. And second year, Junto's, I also supported them and there was controversy there, I also support. So I stand with those working to bring positive, inclusive events in our city. I remain ready and willing to support any parade or celebration that brings our community together in the right way. Regarding my ward, the we did have some stop signs put in recently and they had the little light flashing, which which is really good. I have a new stop sign put in on Butrick, so I can see I can say that it has made a big difference in in that street. One, because, you know, there's a bar area there and now we have people stopping, so they're not just flooring it. So which, you know, there was an accident recently around that area, so I believe this will help keep our street safe. There's another one on Cory by the Julian Towers or the Lakeside Towers. They've been asking for this for years and I'm glad that they finally have it. People don't just leave the building and start flooring it as well, so I can say I can tell I can say that the community neighborhood watch group is very happy and so are the neighbors around there. In the fourth ward as well, we had a grand opening at nine twenty-two Washington Street, Latino Botanero, which is a restaurant. It's based on, you know, having a place to sit down, is themed as a, what do you call it, a video game. And there's for it could be a family setting, people can go in there and eat and I'm so happy they're open. Did go there on the grand opening and discuss some possible issues and which I don't see there are any, but in terms of parking, I also spoke to them about that and then they're addressing some parking, not issues, but they're having an increase of people coming in and they need to prepare for increased parking. And they are, they're actually working partnerships with the laundromat and other other spaces available. So congratulations to the Botanero Latino. Also, another fourth ward in the downtown area. We've been working closely with a development group. They actually opened one of their buildings today that they're investing in in our in our city, that Thirty-Eighth North Genesee, which I'm happy to see them open, the Old Fong's Building, and I'm glad to see more things opening in our in our in our community, especially in the downtown area. In the fourth ward, I want to say happy birthday to a young lady that turned a hundred years old. Do want to say happy birthday to Elvira Flores. Thank you, Mayor, for presenting the Waukegan Proud Award to Mrs. Flores. She turned a hundred, she's turning a hundred years old. Junior Flores is the son, which, you know, I'm really happy to see that there's people out in our community showing how to treat their elderly and their family members. So happy birthday to Ms. Elvira Flores. And we had a I had a great week with the I came after hours and or close after hours and spoke to our commissioner, building commissioner. He is hard at work and I'm happy to see that he's working hard to help our our community. There's a lot of things, a lot of changes hopefully happening soon, but I'll but at the same time, you know, a lot of our pending projects, they're they're getting pushed through, so I'm happy to I can I can say from the developers, from different constituents, they're happy to have this workflow that is better than before. Let's see here, almost done. One oh nine Washington Park, there was a building that has been or a house that has been abandoned for a while, finally got demolished. With that being said, there's a few other ones in my ward that are abandoned. If you guys have seen any, see any, please let me know, that way I can make sure I reach out to our commissioner and have those taken care of, at least boarded up, because it could be a hazard sometimes. We think there's just people not taking care of their yards, but sometimes they are abandoned, so please reach out to me. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so, excuse me, last week was National Police Week and that is held every year. This year, in observance of National Police Week, the U.S. Attorney's Office recognizes the service and sacrifice of federal, state, local, and tribal law enforcement and pays tribute to the officers who have fallen in the line of duty. National Police Week was observed Sunday, May eleventh through Saturday, May seventeenth. And with that, as a further point of note, Chief Navarro. Thank you, Chief. I just mentioned National Police Week being last week, but I wanted you to be present as I comment in gratitude on behalf of myself and the Calvert family and Jones family, who are the relatives of Mr. Edward Calvert, who wandered away from Victory or Victory Hospital on May second. It was missing for a couple of weeks and Chief, when I reached out to you, you know, you you put together that search team and I want to thank you and all of the Waukegan police officers who participated, as well as the parking enforcement officers, animal control officers, and Chief Todd Zupick, our fire inspector, he was out there too. And regrettably, unfortunately, Mr. Calvert was found to be deceased in an isolated and wooded area of Waukegan, but had it not been for the efforts of you and and your team, he might still not have been found, but this to give the family some closure and I just want to express my gratitude for that. Thank you. There was a a shooting, and this is technically in the fourth ward, but it was over on Sheridan Road. Young man approximately twenty years old was found deceased after having been shot multiple times. We don't know, we haven't shared a lot of the particulars, the investigation is opening, but certainly I think I can share that it's it's not believed to have been a carjacking or robbery or some or domestic or something else going on. And certainly, it's a very sad situation when anyone meets their demise in such a manner. You know, I just remind our residents, we no longer live in a safe neighborhoods and houses that we bought twenty, thirty, forty years ago. The neighborhoods have changed, society is changing, crime is everywhere. The best we can do is try to maintain some level of awareness and and take precautions. There was also a stabbing about two weeks ago. The stabbing was up, I think, in the eighth ward. That involved two robbers and two victims who who met, the 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 victims were enticed to come out and to buy a motorcycle. They were accosted and attacked by someone welding a brick as a weapon and they tried to get away. They got in a car, they the the robbers broke the windows out in the car and tried to get the guys out and threatened them with this brick and one of the victims then stabbed one of the robbers multiple times in chest and robber is deceased. Lesson learned from this, if you're buying things online and you're agreeing to meet people, where possible, I would encourage you to meet them in at the police station, in the lobby, in the parking lot, call ahead, non-emergency, tell them, hey, we're going to be out there doing a transaction. If you're going to someone's home, do not go alone and do not go at night. Those would be my words of precaution to you. Lead service line, I've talked enough about this, but I just want to reiterate, the lead service line replacement is very important for these older homes. If you have questions about it, you're not sure, call Public Works, call your Alderman, and call me. And my number is eight four seven four four five three seven eight eight. I'll be more than happy to assist, particularly in the sixth ward, I'll come over and help you out with that. LRS Recycling versus garbage bins, I heard Alderman Florian speaking about it earlier. The garbage trucks have cameras in them, these guys are watching those cameras, they're watching when they dump the recycling bin and if you're overfilling those bins or putting garbage in the recycle bin, they're going to start pulling those bins and you'll only have the one. And then if you're if you're And then if you're, if you're, if you're overfilling that, you're going to have some real issues, right? Because they're, they're not playing around. I want to congratulate and say goodbye to, a little late now, but they're gone, Ron Giardella, who was our Director of Information Technology, Senior Chief, he did a fantastic job for the years he was here, and if it was a long time, he was like a co-director with Eric, who was Eric's name, last name? Who? Yes, yeah. So anyway, both of those guys are gone, they did a great job, thank them for their service to the city. Also, Ms. Nicole Large, who was a contractor and a, she was a grant writer, and she is no longer with the city, but she did a great job for us, brought in a lot of money, and she was instrumental in that grant for the identity letters. Reiterating YCC's commitment and activities in keeping the Sixth Ward clean beyond just picking up trash, they actually helping public safety, so there are some areas in the Sixth Ward where there's overgrown bushes and tree limbs and so forth that impede, you know, being able to see signage or cars, see traffic, cross-traffic, and they've cleaned that up for me on several occasions, done a great job, and I appreciate that. Finally, we had another accident at Gillette and County Street the other morning, six a.m., and just significant vehicle damage. I don't think there's any, any injuries or fatalities that I'm aware of, but I want to raise awareness that even though there's a two-way stop sign, you know, people are blowing through these stop signs. And so, if you're at the stop sign, take an extra minute to, you know, a few seconds to make sure that there's no cross-traffic. I was hit like, just like that on April eighteenth, tore my, you know, totaled my car, and it's one of the scariest things I've been through. And I've been through some scary things, and that one, that one shook me, all right? So, please be careful as you approach and go through the stop signs. I've already met with the engineer, talked to the Public Works Director, we'll be looking at a further solution in traffic mitigation at the stop signs on County and Gillette. And with that, I thank you. Good night.
Alderman Donahurth.
About before that, I just, I want to let the mayor know that I lost, the council meeting went over an hour and a half. Alderman Donahurth, thank you. Doc Swab.
All right. That's ready. Thank you very much. I just want to commend the city staff who I, I talk to almost every day on the phone, City Yard, City Hall, and Police Department. Everything is taken care of, they try to do it, and then again, I like to commend Chief Navarro for the excellent job they did down by the Amstutz there. They found the gentleman, too bad he was deceased, but you guys did a fantastic job, and I want to commend you on that. Police Week was very nice. The Ward Seven cleanup was fantastic, we just got tons and tons and tons of garbage there, filled a whole bunch of dumpsters, and they just kept coming and unloading it for us, so it was a, it was a long time there. I just want to reiterate something that happened to me about two weeks ago. On East Bonnybrook, we have people that live there, and they have cameras in their houses. Right about midnight, a, a white SUV comes down East Bonnybrook, headlights are on, four people in, in the SUV, they pull up right in the middle of the road, right in front of the driveways of every single house on East Bonnybrook. They jump out, they had hoodies, and they had masks on, so we really couldn't tell what they were, weren't able to get a license plate either. The police were called after this, of course, you know, they did come out, but they're, they're getting so bold, they're just walking right up your driveway, they went to my house and they tried my car. My car is locked, you know, and my lights came on, it didn't bother them at all. And thank God the neighbor right next door to me has a real good camera, and he could, he could kind of, kind of pick it out, but they're, they're just so bold, they walk up, if, if there's a car that's open, that they break into it. We haven't had anybody that had their locked car where they would actually break into it. And this was just right at midnight, and they're parking right in the middle, every single house, they stopped it. So remember, keep your eyes open, and, I mean, if you see something, make sure to call the police right away, because, I mean, these people maybe are getting so bold that what they'll do is they'll keep going up the street, if someone calls, the cops are going to get there and, and, and catch them in the act, but they were taking their time. They were walking up and just checking out all the cars and looking in the backyards, so, and it was right at midnight. So just keep your eyes open, and if you have any problems, let me know. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes.
That concludes. Thank you. Just a note, Alderman Florian, we've never, ever disliked each other, we disagreed, that's a difference, major difference, and to continue to be that way, it's just the passion about what we have about Waukegan. Second, the hundred birthday party, everybody. Switch.
Elvira.
Flores. Yeah, a hap- hundred birthday. All right, on three. One, two, three.
Happy Birthday.
Then concludes, motion by Alderman, I'm saying it this way this time, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner, to adjourn. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.